Row, Bagley.
Here.
Harding. Mr. President.
Here. Please rise for the pledge and remarks by Councilman Rowe.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, you may have a seat. We're a week away. This is our last council meeting before the holidays. We're a week away from celebrating Christmas, and I thought it'd be a good time to talk about that a little bit. Everybody, at least in my household, everybody's busy. We're running around town. We're having, you know, parties and we're having family get-togethers. I know my family celebrates a little early because my kids need to go to the outlaws. And so last Sunday was our celebration. And, you know, it's a really, it's a really pretty happy time of the year, right? Well, for some people, that's not the case. There was a group a little over a year ago called Within Reach that did a deep dive on the state of our city. It's called the State of the City of Omaha. And they looked at a lot of different things, neighborhoods, health, education, a lot of different things. And one of the things that came up was that Omaha really is experiencing a mental health crisis. When I think about the numbers, when I see and read the numbers, we really are in a mental health crisis. Their report came out and said that at any given time of the month, at least once or twice a month, 77% of our people, our neighbors are feeling extreme stress. 64% of the time, they're feeling anxiousness. They're feeling burned out. They're feeling depressed. Almost 50% of the time, they're feeling loneliness. And I think if you were to measure these things in the month of December, you'd probably find the numbers to be even greater yet. For a lot of people, they just can't get through the month of December quick enough. And I just wanted to just mention that there's help. If you're feeling those kinds of feelings, if you're having those kinds of emotional feelings, there's help. There's no shame in asking for help, and especially in the time of, you know, around the holidays of December. And so my prayer for all of us is that if you're experiencing the high of your life and things are going well, celebrate with gratitude. If you're not, if you're feeling loneliness, if you're feeling depression, you'll seek out some help. And my prayer for everybody, whether you're in want or in need, is that you would find some measure of joy, some measure of hope, some measure of peace, and some measure of love in this month of December.
Well said. Thank you.
Notice of this meeting has been posted in compliance with the Open Meeting Act, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the Omaha City Council. This is the last meeting of 2024. We appreciate you being here, and we look forward to your testimony on our many items. I would encourage you to turn your cell phones off, or at least to vibrate. If you have any difficulty hearing the proceedings today, you may contact our building commission attendant here on the diocese for a listening device, or our back screen also has closed captioning. We do have three short presentations today to commemorate the loss of two great Omaha citizens and then to commemorate Kwanzaa. First, we'll start with Ms. Melton recognizing Howard Hawks.
Thank you very much. And actually, in regards to Howard Hawks and Don Rose mentioned, one of the things that both Howard and Rhonda were very concerned about, and one of the things they took the lead on in this community is mental health. And in fact, I just attended, just a couple months ago, the new Community Alliance Center off 72nd and right around Mercy, that Howard Hawks was instrumental in getting built. And so I think it was appropriate and a nice thing for you to mention, and thank you for those comments. And I think Howard would appreciate the comments that you made as well. So with that, the proclamation is whereas Howard Hawks was born on June 2, 1935, in Carlton, Nebraska, and grew up in Denver, Colorado, and Bruning, Nebraska. He was the oldest of four siblings, worked on the family farm to increase productivity and efficiency before earning a bachelor's degree in accounting from the University of Nebraska at Lincoln in 1957, and a master's in business administration from the University of Nebraska at Omaha. And whereas Howard married his first wife, Myrna, in Bruning in 1955, and raised three boys between Anderson, Indiana, and Omaha, Nebraska, before Myrna passed away in 2001. He married his second wife, Rhonda, in 2002, and embraced her daughters as his own, and finding joy in the fierce love he had for his family in his role as husband, father, and grandfather. And whereas Howard held executive positions for three divisions of Northern Natural Gas Company before its acquisition by Enron in 1985, and founded Tenaska in 1987, which thrived for 35 years under his executive leadership as CEO and company chairman, and still remained actively engaged and involved upon his retirement in 2022 as a member of the board and chairman emeritus, guiding the company's overall direction and management. And whereas Howard was actively involved in his community, particularly in education, the importance of which to him was evident in his service as a regent at the University of Nebraska for 18 years, and his service on the Creighton University Board for 12 years, and his support of community colleges and trade schools. And whereas Howard served on multiple nonprofit boards, leading fundraising campaigns and supporting numerous organizations, including the Jocelyn Art Museum, Methodist Hospital, Heritage Services, the Boy Scouts, the Omaha Zoo Foundation, the Assistance League of Omaha, the Boys and Girls Club of Omaha, CHI Health Lasting Hope Recovery Center, and Community Alliance. Whereas Howard was a man of strong faith, embodying the expression, "To whom much is given, much is expected," giving generously of himself and leaving an indelible imprint on lives throughout our community. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Omaha recognizes this Saturday, December 21, 2024, as Howard L. Hawks' Day in the City of Omaha. That's the day that he is celebrating the celebration of life here in Omaha at Baxter Arena. So, thank you, council members, for all of us signing this and making Saturday Howard Hawks' Day. He will be greatly missed, and he did so much for our community and so much for his family. And I know he was very loved, and he will be very missed. So, thank you.
Thank you. Council members, I also wanted to mention another prominent Omaha that we lost this week, and I think we'll do a more formal acknowledgement of his life at a future meeting, but I did want to recognize former council member Mark Kraft and his family. Mark passed away over the weekend at the age of 77. He was a two-term council member and a long-term county board member, so put a lot of public service into this community, a big downtown advocate, a downtown business person, and also a central graduate, which I always appreciated. So, I wanted to mention him today and also point out that his service will be on Wednesday, that's tomorrow, at 11:30 at Temple Israel. So, if you're interested in honoring him and his service and his family, please consider doing that tomorrow as well. And then finally, Councilmember Johnson, you're recognized.
Tomorrow, if you could please come up and stand there at the mic, please. Thank you. Whereas Kwanzaa, meaning first fruits, is an annual celebration of Black culture in recognition of the African heritage and descendants of African diaspora. And whereas Kwanzaa, founded by Melana Korunka, was first celebrated in 1966 during the midst of turbulence and oppression of the Black community to promote unity and independence amongst the Black community. And whereas Kwanzaa is a festival of culture, family, remembrance of ancestors, and rededication to the upliftment of the African diaspora. And whereas Kwanzaa observed for seven days, seven full days, with each day representing unity, self-determination, collective work, and responsibility, cooperative economics, purpose, creativity, and faith. And whereas Ms. Bertha Callaway and several other community members ensured Kwanzaa was celebrated in Omaha for over half a century, and now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Omaha proclaims Thursday, December 26, 2024, to January 1, 2025, as Kwanzaa Week. It has been witnessed thereof with a set of hands and the cause and the official seal of Omaha to be affixed on this 17th day of December, January, December 2024. So at this time, I'm gonna come up and issue this to you.
Thanks.
If I may.
Yeah, please.
Thank you, City Council. Just to reiterate, Kwanzaa is a celebration of culture and heritage. This upcoming week, there will be educational programs, lectures, a healing circle for the extensive trauma that the Black community has experienced here in America, supporting Black-owned businesses. There will be kids craft days and a virtual speech competition for high school students here in Omaha. Kwanzaa isn't about the presence. It's about being present. Omaha does have a rich history, the Black community here in Omaha. Even 2024's Nebraska State Hall of Fame inductee Malcolm X will be celebrating his 100th birthday next year, as many of you know. And even up until this very day, Black history is being made. And so I want to end with Buffalo, New York. Buffalo, New York annually hosts a red, black, and green flag at City Hall to recognize Kwanzaa and Black culture. I think it could be a logical next step for Omaha. You can't tell me Buffalo is a better city than Omaha now, right? So, I want to thank you, City Council, for your service, all the city departments, legal team. You have a very important job, so thank you for showing up every day. I ask you that you continue to be mindful of the impact of the decisions that you make on all communities, and particularly the Black community going forward, and the Black community being one of the oldest communities here in Omaha. So, again, I want to thank you, and happy Kwanzaa 2024, 2025.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Madam Clerk, our council members, without objection, as we discussed this morning, I'd like to try and move up number 14, which is the Climate Action Plan item for discussion to be first on our agenda. If there is no objection, what? Okay. There is an objection, so it now requires a motion. Is that correct? I'll second.
No, it just takes one person to object.
Yep. The objection then requires a motion to bring up, to be voted on, to pass or fail. And so there's been a motion.
Matt, who's the law department, I'm not aware of any discussion on this procedural matter of just moving an item up on an agenda item. I'm not aware of anything in the council rules covering this matter. If there's something in Roberts' rules, which I don't think there is, I defer to the clerk on that, but I don't think there's anything in Roberts' rules for such a procedural matter. That is something collective. Do I think? What I think doesn't matter. It's what the council thinks is appropriate. If the council thinks that there should be a discussion to indicate why something's being moved up in front, that discussion is made amongst the seven of you. There's no legal position on it, though.
There's been a motion and a second to move up to first on the agenda item. Roll call.
Hug. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed four to three. Item 14, an ordinance to approve an amendment to the city's master plan for the Omaha Climate Action and Resilience Plan. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Be used communications and support.
Vote on number 14 is today. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you. I want to start out by first thanking the leadership of the Omaha Planning Department and their personnel for the countless hours that they have spent putting this together, as well as the community engagement that went along with that. It is appreciated. So a couple weeks ago, I made a motion to have the consideration to vote on the Climate Action Plan to be held on the week after the public hearing, and thus we are here today. Last meeting, not last week, but last meeting, we had less than 10 people from the public attend the public hearing, and I had about the same amount of emails in support of the plan as written. And I have some ideas as to why there were so few that were here that day or the emails, but granted, over time, there have been more that I've received in support and against. But I'll leave those reasons why for further explanation. So, today, this is what we are voting on. This is the Climate Action Plan. Looks kind of queen like this, doesn't it? But what really are the words in here, and what do they say? Some might suggest we just go ahead and pass this without further consideration. And as Nancy Pelosi once famously said, "You can read the bill after it passes." Because here is what I've gone through in the plan and found some things that we should have further consideration or explanation or discussion about. So before I'm accused of being a denier, or that I don't want to have clean air or clean water, hear me out. There are items within this report that make great sense. There are items in here that cause me great concern, and they should concern you as well. I was also told, "Don't worry about what's in the document. We'll have to take the actions to enact it later." That is good and well, but words in here obligate us to and direct us to approve certain actions in the future. Does it not make better sense to pass a plan or a policy that we can live with and build upon, rather than pass something, giving the public unreal expectations as to what they can expect, just to say, "Hey, look what I passed"? I don't believe that's good policy. Let's put careful consideration into this, come up with a solid, manageable framework, continue to work with it, add to it when and where necessary, and deliver to the public a workable, meaningful plan. We cannot accomplish any of these goals by abandoning current practices without the consideration and how it affects current ordinances, current resolutions, or current policies that are already in the book. In fact, a number of goals being reached for can be done through modifications and innovations to our major utilities like MUD and OPBD and the NRD and some others. At this point, I'm going to make a motion to lay this over to February 4, 2025, with the understanding that we will carefully edit this to create a meaningful plan to implement. So I'll make that motion to lay over till February 4.
Some motion and a second. Any further lights?
We can vote on that first before we have further lights, correct?
We can. Yeah. Okay. There's a motion and a second to lay over. Roll call.
Hug. Johnson.
No.
Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
No.
Motion failed, three to four.
You may.
Okay. So let's look at some of the actions and implementations that are called for in this plan. So I'll start out by saying that greenhouse emissions, greenhouse gas emissions, have gone down in Omaha by 20% over the last 10 years. At the same time, our population has grown by 8.5%. Our overall GDP has increased by 14.5%, and per capita GDP has gone up $4,000 per person. And the employment, the number of jobs, has gone up by 7,300. That's all in the past 10 years, and we've already seen a reduction in the greenhouse gas emissions by some of the current policies that are being employed. So this report comes up with eight sectors, that I think a more realistic, practical, and achievable goal would be to match the state's GHG, or the greenhouse gas emission reduction rate, of 30%. And again, we're already 20% there by 2023. The goal is to increase in the first sector, the transportation and land use. The goal is to increase the number of EVs in Omaha from 1,263 vehicles to 51,800 vehicles. That's 5,000 additional EVs per year in Omaha, just Omaha. That's not the metropolitan area. Besides the higher prices of acquisition for EVs, the price per unit, and the charging stations, there are other hidden costs associated with EVs. Like I said, the charging hookups for residential units, the cost to dispose of the batteries, the cost to replace the batteries, which can range anywhere from $5,000 to $20,000 per vehicle, depending on the vehicle. Generally, EVs weigh more than 30% than gas vehicles, and as you probably may have heard earlier today, the state announced that beginning in 2025, there's an additional surcharge on EVs. I believe it's from $75 to $150 per year. The additional weight puts wear and tear on our streets and infrastructure. The cost allocations from the gas tax and other revenue sources are not being taken into account in this analysis. As a matter of fact, I went with a conversation and seminar basically with Hawkins Construction just last week to discuss some of this issue about EVs and how they are not really paying their fair share, if you will, on their wear and tear of what they do on their roads. And this is kind of interesting, and as I talked about earlier, about how it connects with, or we need to see what the implications or effects on other policies or actions are. For every 1,000 pounds of baseline added to a vehicle, the probability of a fatality goes up 47%. I'm not sure that that really works with Vision Zero's goals. The capacity of OPBD to handle the load and the availability of materials for charging stations in residences, and affordability of those charging stations, and I'll have more on this later, is something else that needs to be considered. The second sector talks about building in energy. I'll talk about clean energy here in a second, but the data collected by Pale Blue Dot for this report and plan actually showed that residential per-household electrical usage dropped 10.3% over the last 10 years. The per-household use of natural gas also declined. It went down 12%. Non-residential energy consumption, or commercial, also saw declines in per-job usages. Electrical per-job use declined by almost 10%. Natural gas per-job usage also went down by 2%. It seems like common sense approaches like these, currently being deployed without any mandates, plans, or edicts, seems to be trending in the right direction. So I'll talk about, just quickly, about clean energy. Nowhere in this report, and nowhere in any of our discussions, has there been any talk about SMRs, or small modular reactors. It's only about solar or wind. If you want clean energy, small modular reactors are the place where we can see the best benefit. For example, a small modular reactor can create 300 megawatts of power and takes up a footprint of about three to four acres. For a solar farm to produce the same amount of power, 300 megawatts, it would take 2,200 acres of ground to produce that energy. And where are we going to find 2,200 acres of ground in the metropolitan area to do that? So then what we have to do is go to a different county in a rural area and take up 2,200 acres of ground in that area and produce the energy there. But then we have to, how do you get the energy here? You have to build transmission lines and bring that all the way into Omaha. So nowhere again in this report does it ever talk about anything associated with small modular reactors, only solar. Let's see. So, the study also finds that the households with 6% energy burden, the energy burden is that percentage of cost, your utility cost to run your house. But for the capital costs associated with some of those measures like solar, to potentially reduce the ratio would far outweigh the benefit, especially in our older neighborhoods. And those are, and in those neighborhoods, that are less likely to be able to afford something like solar. OPBD has an interesting calculator on their website. You can go into OPBD's website and plug in your address and plug in your average monthly electrical bill, and then you ask for what the calculation is, as to how long it will take for that to pay off the capital expense for the solar power to be, the solar panels to be put on your house. I challenge any of you to go do that. Not one person in this room would be able to find that there is a positive payback over any period of time. As a matter of fact, when I put mine in, my payback is a negative 53 years. The next sector deals with waste management. And again, we find the baseline surveys that Omaha has made progress in waste management with common sense approaches. In the last 10 years, total waste handled, or those being solid waste as well as recyclables, increased by over 11%. However, on a per capita basis, that's actually 3% lower. Recycling has also increased and thereby diverted waste from going to the landfill. I found this kind of number interesting. It said only by 2.3% over that period of time. I was a bit surprised by that number, and I actually challenged maybe Pale Blue Dot to go back and look at this, because it seemed like when we made the switch to FCC and the recyclable carts, that we saw a great influx in the amount of being recycled, or that which was diverted from the solid waste. Admittedly, organics diverted from the landfill decreased during this time by 7.5%. And that's likely a lot from the limited periods of yard waste collections that we've done in the last few years. that we've done in the last few years. The study generally calls for an updated assessment of what is actually going to the landfill, as I just touched on, and the result will be better data to devise a plan going forward. There may be a better understanding today about the makeup of residential waste, but non-residential is still unknown. The next sector dealt with wastewater and water. And during this 10-year study period, water consumption did increase by 15%. However, wastewater during that same period of time decreased by 9%. Again, I think I'm pointing out that by common sense approaches, we're moving in the right direction. On average, but not necessarily Omaha, significant municipal water distribution is lost through leaks in water mains and water pipes on private property. And maybe here I might gain a few people's support on this next point. But buried in that is, and I meant the pun there about buried, in that is another argument for the streetcar. A number of those older pipes are being replaced in the streetcar area and will no doubt help reduce that lost water that I just discussed. The study also encourages, which I agree with, to plan, design, infrastructure capacities for the anticipated increase in individual rain events and for the potentially longer periods between those rain events. As a matter of fact, we just got briefed this morning on a plan that Omaha is going to move forward with to, if it sounds kind of interesting, it is, because it's making our sewers smarter. It's technology that will help the Public Works Department with those rain events and with those drought events, and how water in our sewer systems gets moved around. Planning codes can also help to address some of these issues, like improved rainwater collection systems, rain gardens, detention ponds, swales, and the like. The next sector was on local food and agriculture. And frankly, this sector was fairly brief and really did not have much in it other than to suggest regenerative farming practices, calling for the protection and preservation of agricultural land, both of which are not very applicable to Omaha since we don't have a lot of that and don't have control over much of that. I'm getting to the end of the sectors here, and I'll move into some of the actions. But green space and ecosystems, again, the sector's goals talked about more tree canopies, reducing grass lawns, telling you how many trees to put in your yard. There's also discussion about the need for biodiverse plantings or trees, pollinator gardens, and the like. And those are all very good goals to have. But however, the areas of need are not suggested to be based on actual canopy percentages, but they're handicapped or indexed based on canopy equity. I want to talk about some of the particulars, and this is why I think we need to take some time to go through this with kind of a finer tooth comb and better understanding. At the end of each sector, there is a page that summarizes what each one of these sector's goals should be. And I wholly agree with all of those. I mean, they're very simple, as I said earlier, kind of common sense approaches. And... But this report goes a little too far in that sense. And I'll give you a couple of examples. I'm not going to go through everyone. There are 171 of these.
No.
No, Larry. There are 171 of these. I'm not going to go through all 171 of them. But I do want to point out some that, again, obligate us in the future to adopt these in some form. So I probably should have prioritized some of these. I will, I did prioritize a couple of these. Implement an RV-ready building ordinance that requires new developments to have wiring capacity to charge electric vehicles and establish minimum parking requirements for exclusive EVs. A couple of weeks ago, we had in front of us the electrical standards that we were set to adopt. And one of the things that it added, let's see, there were five amendments that would have added anywhere from $700 to $2,000 to the cost of a house, is what I think we all kind of finally agreed upon. And it was also said that for every $1,000 you increase the cost of a house, you take out 400, and I think it was 435 potential buyers. If we are requiring new housing developments, require new developments to have wiring capacity to charge electrical vehicles, what's that going to do to the cost of a house? Those stations cost about $3,000 to put in. How many people is that going to take out of the potential homeownership? Another one, as it relates to EV infrastructure. It should create citywide and city facility EV charging station study and master plan and map existing infrastructure, determine the current and future demand for EV stations, and to identify options for increasing the number of electrical charging stations in public parking areas and in commercial and high-density residential areas. The plan should explore EV technologies, EV technology options, and consider approaches for increasing charging availability for residents of multifamily housing. Again, that's going to add cost to housing. The charging ability for residents in the multifamily housing, particularly within low-to-moder income neighborhoods. The plan should include implementation strategies to meet citywide EV charging demand and promote adoption of EVs within the community. I'll pick out a couple more here, and then I see there's some other lights. Maybe I'll come back for some others later. But include, we have a couple, I'll read one that I'm not sure I understand, and that's why I'd like to have some questions answered on this. Adopt and maintain building codes to within one cycle of current best practices for energy efficiency. I'm not sure what the one cycle is, but maybe we could find that out later. Here are a couple that I find interesting as well, too. This was in the Building and Energy Action Sector. Focus programs details on low-to-moder income households and small emerging businesses for early adoption through incentives and/or cost-sharing programs. Another one, incorporate evaluation and promotion of energy systems and energy alternatives into the application and review of projects requesting TIF financing. So now, when you're taking a project through for tax increment financing, it'll be subject to a climate review. Adopt a formal resolution supporting OPPD's net-zero carbon commitment. As part of the resolution, establish a clean grid task force to prioritize and develop programs supporting that commitment. And the reason I read that one is that this plan obligates us, I quit after 50, the number of stand-up committees and organizations that are required through this plan. Establish and promote participation in curbside community composting program. There's also another one in here, I don't have it marked right now, but where it contemplates having a compost pickup as part of your weekly service from garbage. So you would have your solid waste, your recyclables, and composting. I'd like to see the fiscal note on that one as well, too. I'm not against composting, and people can do it in their backyards today. But I think to have a separate pickup for composting, again, I'd like to see the fiscal note on that one. This one really got me. Partner with MUD to establish a conservation-oriented rate structure for water services. Include capacity support to implement an income-based tiered billing structure. Income-based tiered billing structure. That's what this plan calls for. There are a couple others on TIF. I'll do one more, and then I'll turn it over. This one is on TIF. Utilize tax increment financing to incentivize mitigation and adaptation actions in line with goals of the Climate Action Plan. There are a lot of things like that in here, folks. Again, before you say I'm against clean water and clean air, and I don't want to have, you know, a safe city and have these things, we need to be cognizant of what we're adopting. We did it with the Housing Action Plan. There were some things in there that I tried to get amended out that didn't get amended out, that we're seeing the effects of that today. And we gave the public an expectation that all these things in the HAP would happen, and they haven't. And we're doing the same thing for the Climate Action Plan. What I'm suggesting is that we take a step back and start with a plan that we can build off of, rather than adopt a plan and carve out of. I think that's sensible. I think that's reasonable, and I think the citizens of Omaha would really appreciate it.
Mr. Roe, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I appreciate Mr. Harding's deep dive into this document. I think when we adopted the funding for it, we knew that there was going to be a lot of copy and paste that was going to come from Pale Blue Dot. And I think we see that in the document. And I think when we voted for that funding source, I remember making the comment that there were definitely going to be areas where I could not buy in. And I think Mr. Harding identified, you know, many of them. But I think, in my view, I think it makes sense for us to adopt some sort of a plan and then do the tweaks. I was the one that probably suggested that to Brinker, and we don't agree. So, and that's okay. But I think it's important, when I heard the testimony last week or a couple weeks ago, whenever it was, that, you know, in the chamber, and what all the organizations that came up and talked about the benefit of having a plan. And it is, it's a plan. It's not that we are adopting or saying that we're going to do everything that's in the plan. In my mind, when those things do come, if they do come, I certainly will push back on, you know, putting a charging station in every brand-new house because it does affect the number of people that can afford to buy a house. And so things like that are going to be of concern to me, and I will definitely push back and vote against those. But I think when we talk about, you know, attracting new businesses, there are certain businesses that look to cities, and they say, well, do you have a climate action plan? And if you don't check that box, you're disqualified. You're not going to even be considered. And I want to make sure that we're taking every opportunity that we can to grow our city. That's important to me. I want to see good growth and positive growth. And as Mr. Harding said, I mean, we're all for clean air and clean water, and nobody's going to argue about that. But it's the details that are going to come before us that are going to be really tough to flesh out. And I think, you know, to come back next, in two weeks or in three weeks, and offer up amendments, it's probably, we're going to be the same place we are today. So I'm probably going to vote to adopt the plan with reservations, knowing, and I'm going to put it right on the record, that I am not in full agreement with everything in the plan. And I want just everybody to know that, that there's going to be a lot of pushback as we get into the real details of what Pale Blue Dot put together. I mean, we did spend $1 million for this plan, and there's certainly things in there that make sense, and I'm fine with and good with and appreciate. But there are certainly things that are, to me, way out there that, you know, I really don't want to spend, you know, I don't want to adopt a plan or an item that's coming out of the plan that costs us $1 million to save $750,000. It just doesn't make economic sense, and it doesn't, you know, I look at these things as, you know, economic. And if they, you know, if you can prove to me that it's going to make economic sense, that it's going to be efficient and well-done, then I'll make my decision on that. But I will probably support adopting the plan, if that's what we have to do today. I was in support of laying it over to give it a little bit more time to cook, but that doesn't happen. So just know that I will be pushing back as these come forward. And I think it was Mr. Harding that also talked about the Housing Affordability Action Plan. I know I have expressed frustration to the Planning Department about the lack of action that we've been able to get done on that. We've done a few things, but when we're 30,000 units short, and I know this isn't probably germane to this topic, but when we're 30,000 housing units short or more, and we think we're going to move the dial by adding five or six ADU units in our community a year, that's just not going to get it done. I mean, it's a step in the right direction, but it's just not going to get it done. And I think there's going to be similar things in this plan as well. That there are things that will be good and wise and beneficial, and we should do. But there's also going to be things in there that I think do not make sense, and I will have a problem with.
Thank you, Ms. Melton.
Thank you very much. Councilman Harding, thank you for going through a lot of the details that are in here. I agree when I was reading it, and basically that we will not lay it over. We want to push this through, and really, we didn't want people to see any of those little things that are in there, we just want to get it passed. And in fact, I heard earlier, it was Brinker Harding making amendments. We don't want any amendments. We're not even going to consider an amendment. And I think that's somewhat concerning to me because there's 157 pages, I think, is what I printed out. I tried to save a little money by doing it in black and white. But when I go through this, there's a lot of things that are really good in here. Everybody wants to reduce emissions, and what I love is that our city has been doing these things without being mandated to do it. Because I think, well, I think just Nebraskans in general, number one, farmers are probably the best conservationists that you'll ever meet. The land is their life. They are the biggest protectors of the environment. And so I think all we have to do is look to some of our local farmers in this state for guidance. But when I look in this plan, there's just so many things that I have an issue with because they're counterproductive to our other goals. When one of our biggest goals is affordable housing and public safety, two of my biggest goals. And in here, I see recommendations that, by the way, if you pass it, and I have heard from other council members, we don't want to pass this. We also want to implement this plan and everything in it as quickly as possible. And so now we're going to increase, we're talking about changing building codes. We're talking about making sure every single building can have an EV hookup, where we currently only have 5,000 EVs in the city. You know, let people make that decision. And who knows, in 10 years, perhaps our technology will come around, and maybe we won't be needing electric cars. Maybe we will have an alternative fuel source that scientists are coming up with. I think my goal, I think, is for our entire country to be energy-independent first. That's where we need to get back to. That'll help increase our economy, and we also need to look at other alternative energy sources that aren't just solar and wind. Because I think you look at Texas, and that proves that you can't just rely on solar and wind for your alternative energy. But some of the things that I kind of look in here, it states that we do need to require the building sector to adopt some of these things. And it says "require," not just suggestions. And again, yes, will it have to come back to the city council for a vote? Yes. What I struggle with is if I vote for this plan, it sounds like I'm supportive of everything in here. I think I'm kind of in between Councilman Roe and Councilman Harding, where I think they're both saying the same thing, and I think say the same thing I say. There is a lot in this plan that if we just would have taken a little bit of time, I think we could have made some common sense amendments, and everybody here would probably agree with it. But I don't know why we don't want to take the time to necessarily do that. I even think people in the Planning Department would probably even agree with us that some of the things in here are going to be very counterproductive to our other goals. And I mean, you have in here that there are suggestions of replacing gas ranges. I've seen in other cities that have adopted these plans that then want to make gas ranges illegal. You can't put gas ranges into any new buildings. Those are things that I don't want to see happen in our city. And yes, I can vote no on those things moving forward. And yes, I can vote no on those things moving forward. So, my concern is by passing this plan, by saying yes to this plan, it sounds like I'm accepting everything in it. And, and I can tell you, I read through it twice, and there's still stuff that you catch, even on the second one that I didn't catch the first time. What I do like, again, I think you brought it up, what we're doing for the CSO project, increasing the technology in our sewers. We didn't need a climate action plan. We didn't have to have a plan in order to do that. Our Public Works Department and our Planning Department, I give them credit for always looking for ways to make our water cleaner, to make our water better, to make our sewers run better. And now, to implement some of these technologies that will also help, not just in moving our water and helping with any potential flooding, but also, I think, protect us from any kind of cybersecurity-type threats or any threats that we would have to our water source. And that's, those are the things that I really appreciate the city doing. They didn't need to be mandated to do it because they're good people, and they're doing it on their own. But what I do worry about is the cost and the fiscal note that Mr. Harding was talking about. There is virtually no mention to what it costs in here to do these things. There is some mention about cost savings, but it's very selective. And what I would really like to see is an independent analysis of these costs. Because the more, the taxpayers are mandated to pay for some of these things that I don't believe is actually going to even help the climate change or resiliency, I worry about taking that money away from public safety, taking that money away from our first responders, from our police, from the resources that both of them need for new fire stations, new apparatuses, making sure that they have what they need to keep our city safe. Taking away money from the Public Works Department for the roads, to make sure that we have safe roads, to make sure that we can get brined down, to make sure that we can get our streets plowed. Those are the things that we need to be very cognizant of, and we need to have a balance. I, I think this council, for the most part, when we do our budget, is very good. I think we, we talk about these things, but we also take the time to do that. We spend almost two months doing that. Here, we were going to have the public hearing and a vote on the same day. This council did not want to give any more time. We were lucky to get one week to be able to review this. I think if we had a little more time, we could make some common-sense changes to this. I mean, some of the suggestions in here, plan meals to maximize nutrition and minimize climate impact. Eat a plant-rich diet. Give up meat on Mondays. I mean, the, that's fine, there's some suggestions. I don't know that this is what the, the city of Omaha should be doing. It, you know, telling people, apparently what I eat for dinner is going to affect the climate, because that, some of these things, to me, just don't really make any sense. And then, when you do that, I think it minimizes the good things that are actually in this plan. Tree canopies, eliminating parking lots. These are, those are all great things. Clean water, clean air, reducing our emissions. I mean, just in our landfill alone, capturing that methane and using it to power the homes, which is a great thing that, that we're doing. We still have to take things to the landfill, but reducing the amount of things that we take to the landfill is also another good thing. So, again, in this plan, there's a lot of good, there's a lot of bad, and there's a lot of just stupid that makes no sense. So, I believe that if we took a little more time, we could make some common-sense amendments, and we could all get to the same end goal of making sure that we are respecting our environment, we're doing our part here in the city of Omaha to help the state. State already has a climate action plan that we should be following. They already took the time and adopted it. I don't know why every city in the state needs to then pay a million dollars to do their own, and we all could just follow the state's plan. Again, that would be more fiscally responsible, but sometimes I find that when it comes to certain issues, people don't care what it costs. You do have to have a balance. We have to be fiscally responsible with our taxpayer dollars. We have to make sure that our property taxes are affordable for the people in this city. We have to make sure that they can afford to actually buy a house or live in the house they have when they retire. Those are all things that we have, again, it's called balance. It's just called balance. So, I, I'm just surprised that the council wouldn't want to take some time to just have some common-sense discussions on some of the things that are in here so that we could pass a plan that we could present to the citizens of Omaha and say, we do want to move forward and vote on these things. But passing a plan and saying, okay, we'll move forward on this, but I don't like a lot of it, you know, I, I struggle with that. So, I'm with, I'm with Councilman Rowe. I'll just vote no on a number of the things that are contained in here when it comes in front of us. And if I vote yes on, on this plan, doesn't mean that I support, oh, I don't know, out of those 71, I would say probably a third, about a third of it. So, again, I, I am disappointed that we wouldn't take a little more time to make those common-sense amendments. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, just so everyone knows, we don't always agree on everything, even though we get accused of that all the time. But I just want to restate, so people are clear. I, I said from the outset that I'm in favor of having a plan in place. But I want to have a plan in place that makes sense and is a framework for us to strategically add to it. There, there are a lot of good things in this plan, as I, I think I said earlier. As a matter of fact, the summary pages after each sector, I think, you know, are good common-sense recaps of, of what we could be doing. But again, it's, it's hard to accept a plan that has all these things that I think a number of us agree are kind of frivolous or nonsensical, that don't belong in here. And I, you know, look, I would love to be able to vote for this. I know we get accused if, because I'm going to vote no if, you know, if we don't, well, we weren't successful in getting this laid over. So, I'm assuming that it gets passed, and I'll be accused of, of whatever, but I'm willing to stand on, on that, that box and say, you know, I'm for something, I just want to be for the right thing. I, I, again, I just think it makes more sense to adopt a plan that we can build on rather than adopt a plan that you can chisel away at, because I think we all know adding to things is a lot easier than taking things away when it comes to government.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Pesterson. I, I might have exaggerated on the cost of the plan. It probably did not cost us a million dollars, but it was a significant amount of money. But I wanted to kind of shift the focus now from climate action to the R-word. It's the Resiliency Plan, and I think that's something we haven't really talked about. In my view, the resiliency part of this plan is one of the more important parts of, one of the more important, important parts of it. We know that the climate is changing. It's, it's been changing since God created the, the universe. I mean, it's always been in a state of cycle, and for us to think that we can change the climate is kind of crazy. But what I think we can do is put plans in place to be resilient. When, when those changes take place, and we have events like the flood, or we have a tornado that comes through, I think it's important for us as a city to have a plan in place to be able to meet and respond to those kind of changes. And I think that's the resiliency part of the plan that we really haven't been talking about. So, I think it's important for us as a city to have those plans in place so that it's easily accessible when, when something happens, when, when we have, you know, a 22-inch snowfall, what's our plan? You know, when we have a 6-inch rainfall in 24 hours, what's our plan? Those kind of things are an important part of this, in my view as well, and I hope that it's a part of this, a part of this plan going forward.
Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe. Ms. Milton raised a very important point. Let the people have a voice in this decision process. If I would agree to this logic, this would also apply to our discussion to have a streetcar. Yet, people in low to moderate income have struggled with reliable public transportation for decades. Yet, we have no priority to address that concern. The citizens of Omaha should determine priorities of our cities in every aspect. Thank you.
Mr. Hug.
Okay. Sometimes things seem like they go right over my head, so I have to ask stupid questions. So, entertain me for a moment, if you would, please. So, this is basically just suggestions. There's nothing in here until we, comes back to the council to approve an ordinance. Is that correct, Mr. Fenslaw?
Dave Fenslaw, City Planning. Yeah, I mean, the plan is in front of you. Any follow-up changes to city code? Obviously, I have to come back to this council.
Okay. So, we're just basically approving suggestions. Was that a fair assessment, Mr. Fenslaw?
I would say you were, would be approving ideas on future policy for the city.
Okay. As much as I like to support Mr. Harding, you know, it's, it's really difficult for me not to, and I wish I could, Mr. Harding, but I am going to make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Does that conclude your remarks for now?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Milton.
Thank you. And I, I didn't ever suggest that the citizens of Omaha should vote on a plan. We vote on things every, every week. Sometimes we have over 100 agenda items. We can't have a vote on all of those every week. But what I am suggesting is that there will be votes on, on individual plans in here. However, Mr. Fenslaw, we're adopting this as part of our master plan, isn't that correct? That's what the, the, this is an ordinance to adopt this as part of our master plan.
That's correct.
So, we're not, this isn't just a plan of suggestions that we're just placing on file. This is actually an ordinance. This is going into our city code as part of our master plan. And when it's in the master plan, and I'm sure anybody that's trying to do development in our city knows, you got to follow the master plan. I think I'm looking at some people back there, because if it's in the master plan, you can't violate the master plan. You have to follow it. It's part of our city code, it's part of our city ordinance. And so, I think this is a little more than just some suggestions. What we're doing by voting for this is committing that this plan is part of our master plan in our city code, and we are committing this council to following it, even if we don't like certain things in it. That's the concern that I have, is that, that's what we're committing this council and even future councils to do, because we're going to say it's, it's in our, in our code. It was an ordinance that we're adopting this plan. Again, that's why I said, more than happy to vote for this if we just had some common-sense amendments. I don't know why we can't have common sense in government, when I think all of us want the same things. Let's just, sometimes you got to meet in the middle a little bit and get rid of, of some of the junk so that we can concentrate on the real improvements that we need to make, and that are actually in this, and they're actually in this plan. Because bring a number of these things in front of us, and I'll vote yes. You know, so I guess I could look at it the opposite way. Instead of, I will vote no on, on the things I don't like, I will vote yes on the things that I do like. But I do have serious concerns voting for this plan with the number of items that it states in here will be required. They're not just suggestions. They state that they will be required. So, that, that's the issue that, that I have with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harding.
Yes. Actually, I was going to say kind of some of the same things. It's, yes, it's suggested in parts, but it's also the words "required" are used in parts as well, too. So, it does obligate, so when, when that comes back and someone says this is part of the master plan, is, is, has been pointed out, that is an important point. And it says, it's, you pass this, and it's a requirement of, I mean, how, it puts you kind of in a box on, on, you know, whether or not you approve it. Again, I, there are some really good things in here, and I, and I, again, commend the Planning Department and all those, the committees and the worker groups and the citizens who had input in this. But, you know, I, I think we've, we've made a lot of progress even over the last 10 years. And I agree with Mr. Rowe and what, what Heath Mello from the Chamber, the President of the Chamber, who was here last week, said. There are, you know, these are important things to have on the books when people or companies are looking at Omaha as an option. And I want to make sure we have those things on the books. I just want to make sure they're reasonable and manageable with those, with, managing those expectations of, of what can actually happen. And to, to pass something just to say, you know, I passed it, and not care about some of those unrealistic requirements, not suggestions, requirements, that's where, that's where I have a problem. I agree with Mrs. Milton. I, I would love to be able to, you know, come back in, in a month's time and, and kind of start with those well-hanging fruits that we think are, are manageable and accomplish, what we can accomplish, as well as what makes an impact. That's where I'd like to start.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second to approve. No for the lights. Public hearing's over. Roll call, please.
Hug. Johnson.
Please take a question.
It's a motion and a second to approve.
To approve the item under your premise?
Yes.
Yes.
Milton.
No.
Rowe.
Aye.
Harding.
No.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. We're now returned to the regularly scheduled agenda items, which starting with liquor.
Item six, to consider a class C liquor license for a charred burger and bar located at 18101 Chicago Street, Suite 101.
Public hearing and vote on number six is today. Proponents, please.
I'm Jason Coore, 2132 South 181st Circle, and I'm just here representing Charred Chicago 181 LLC. If the council has any questions.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Harding.
The second location in Omaha, correct?
Second in Omaha, third in the metro.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And again, I apologize you had to stick around since we rearranged the agenda, apparently for no reason as well, too, but I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Just motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Aye.
Harding.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. We're now returned to the regularly scheduled agenda items, which starting with liquor.
Item six, to consider a class C liquor license for MLB LLC located at 8505 Frederick Street. Ace communication from the Planning Department regarding a permit for the outdoor area.
Public hearing and vote on number seven is today. Proponents, please.
Andrew Collins, Erickson Cedars-Tromlog from 10330 Regency Parkway Drive, here with the principal of the applicant, Mr. Melvin Bull. Two points I'll touch on, and then just take any questions you have. I'll touch on them as quickly as I can. First is the trade name. There's a note in there from the State Office that says the trade name is going to change. MLB LLC is the formal business name. The, the premises will do business as VIP Lounge. Mr. Bull has run the VIP Lounge on 90th and Arbor since 2005, and the location's going to move. So, that's a point of clarification on the trade name. Second point that I'll raise is the outdoor patio area. I understand there was some question about permitting, and Mr. Bull is fully aware that he'll have to acquire the appropriate permits in order to have that outdoor seating area, intends to do so. Planned opening is May 1st, 2025, so there should be plenty of runway to get that and any other items addressed. That's all I have. We're here to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents?
Hi there. My name is Dustin Tovar, 17508 Howard Street. I am the property owner right next door at 8529 Frederick Street. My wife and I own the property. We also operate the business next door. It's a gym business. We offer fitness, nutrition, health, wellness, physical therapy services. On average, we have about 300 members that visit our gym. We also have professional contract with a company called North Point, Nebraska. It's a drug and alcohol recap facility. It's nationally renowned. They recently moved to the Omaha market. We've been working with them for two years now. They bus their adult inpatients to our facility three days a week. Their imagined location, their teen adolescent location is actually within 800 meters of our facility, right up the street at 8517 Frederick. Excuse me, 8710 Frederick. We also host Special Olympics group here at our gym, teens and adolescents, and then young adults. We're strongly opposed to the liquor license being approved, having a bar operate next door. Not only do we feel like it might be harmful to our business and the mission we're trying to to serve, but also to the neighborhood in general. There's been a lot of improvements going on in that 84th Street corridor over the last few years. Just the mile radius within our building, that location, there's been a lot of improvements from the Omaha Public Library Administration Building moving over there. You guys spent a lot of tax money to do that. We have a children's hospital facility right across the street. We recently put up a new building. There's a new Starbucks growing in across the street. Really a lot of improvement, and we feel like this would be a back step or step in the wrong direction. There hasn't been a bar in the area in a long time. We don't need a bar. We don't want a bar. We're not asking for a bar. I know they may be getting driven out of their current location, but there's a lot of strip malls with empty bays in Omaha that I think would be more suitable for this type of operation. Certainly wouldn't be a welcome addition for us. Also, I do want to add that being in that area, there is a lot of issues with unhoused individuals passing through with the interstate, 84th Street, the Row Road, and then the Papewell Creek literally runs right by our building. All that combined, we get a little bit of an issue with unhoused individuals camping out, coming onto our property, camping out under the trees. They recently set up a camp in the vacant building next door. It used to be the old ambulance building. They they basically did a lot of vandalism in there. Again, it's a real problem. I don't see how adding a bar to the area would would be beneficial, could possibly even be a recipe for disaster with with the unhoused individuals that are constantly making their way through posing a problem.
Okay. Summarize and then we'll see if there's any questions.
Yep, I would say let's look to add a tenant to the neighborhood that wants to make a positive impact. We're positively impacting the health of Omahans every day. I feel like a bar would be doing the exact opposite. So again, strongly opposed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other opponents that want to speak? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Mr. Bull, if you have a minute, please. First of all, did you you said you've operated this since 2005?
I have.
So you probably purchased it from the Swanson Boys and.
I did. I purchased it from.
Scrappy before that?
Yeah, Scrappy's widow, Mary Lee. Yep.
Okay. I mean, this is this is an institution and one that I'll I'll admit on the record here since we're in the Christmas season that I used to tell my parents I was going to the midnight mass and I was going to the VIP.
Sure, sure. Hope you'll come down the street.
I thought it was sacrilege to hear that you were moving, but but it's it's the the people that come there that make the place, and it is a quiet place and it is a neighborhood place. And I know the location where it's going into. I think it's that it doesn't even interact or face the the other business that was just up here in opposition to it. So I don't think there will be any any conflict there, but I wish you. You know what? You're out of.
Not from the audience, please. We'll see if there's further questions.
So I will make a motion to approve subject to the the building permits, and I wish you well.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. There was a motion and a second to approve. Mr. Hug, you're recognized.
Don't go away, okay? Like Mr. Harding, I can't tell you how many evenings I've spent at the VIP, but like Mr. Harding said, it definitely is an institution. Since you're relocating, I'm going to ask you to consider moving it to my district.
Never know, maybe in the future. Now, this is.
But I I just want to make a comment about I I know the strip mall, too. That's where Gator's Restaurant used to be.
Yep.
And another historic institution, Callahan's.
Yep.
So it's got a lot of history has of being a bar venue, if you will. And I don't recall any instances with Gator's when Gator's was there and, you know, Callahan's. I think it's a good fit. I wish you well. I'm glad you stayed in business, but, you know, I'd like it a lot more if it was in my district.
Well, thank you, but yeah.
If I may, Mr. Hug, the other point I would make in addition to those other bars, having operated in that same area, Mr. Bull's operated a bar for 20 years now, or close to 20 years in the Omaha area with a very good record of doing so in a way that.
An impeccable record.
Thank you.
I agree with in a way that that supports and does not does not harm the Omaha community.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bagley.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Collins, good afternoon. Thanks for coming down. I sit on the Law Committee with Councilmembers Harding and Melton, and we see tavern reports and issues and challenges at a lot of taverns, but the VIP, how long have you owned it for? You said 20 years?
Yeah, 19 years right now, yep.
Those are the things I look at in respect to the your neighbors that potentially, if this is granted, you'll be next to them. I have found you and know that with no tavern reports and issues, that's a big thing for me, and I am respectful of neighbors and other businesses. But what I also look at is the history, is a longtime business owner, bar owner, that you're moving, I think that's in Councilmember Harding's district, it's actually moving into mine.
Right.
So those are the things, I don't care where in the city you move to, but those are the things that are important to me, really understanding the Law Committee and things that bad operators have. You don't have those. You have a very good record, and that's why I would encourage you to reach out to your your neighbors and make yourself available to them. And if there's issues, that you work with them so it never gets to us on the Law Committee. I know you understand that. So those are the things I look at, and that's why I'm supporting this today and and I'm confident that you're going to run a good business, and I know exactly where it's out there, that it's going to be a good spot. And again, work with your neighbors and make them feel comfortable with you going in there and welcoming. So that's why I'll support you today.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no further lights. There was a motion and a second to approve subject to permits. Roll call.
Hug. Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Happy holidays.
Item eight, to consider a classy liquor license for Miranda's located at 11036 Elm Street.
Public hearing and vote on number eight is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Eric Barrero Miranda, and I'm here representing Miranda's LLC located at 11036 Elm Street in Rock Brook Village.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. There's a motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Hug. Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Item nine, to consider a classy liquor license for Level Event Center located at 5421 North 103rd Street, Suite 100.
Public hearing and vote on number nine is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Jermaine Ballard. I am the owner of Professional Relaxation Group, 3526 North 124th Ave, Omaha, Nebraska, 68164, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. There's a motion to approve and a second. Roll call.
Hug. Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Item 10, to consider a classy liquor license for Johnny's Casino located at 2502 Leavenworth Street, Ace Communication Opposition.
Public hearing and vote on number 10 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is John Watson, 1624 South 32nd Ave, here on behalf of 2502 Leavenworth LLC. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Watson, good afternoon. I'll go back to November 22nd. I took a nice tour of Completely Kids, which several of us have been to, at 2451 St. Mary's. Beautiful new building. It's to help kids in our community, a great mission there. So that's when I talked to Ms. Ann Lawless, who is also on the Quarters Neighbor Association, about her concerns with 2451 Leavenworth and then the right or St. Mary's in the right across the street. They got a a building in the old Park Ave Medical Building. It's a great building. I encourage you to tour that as well. So she sent in a letter of opposition to this liquor license. So I reached out to you last Thursday, and we had a nice conversation, and I encourage you of the number one, I share the concerns if with that immediate area. I'd like to give this to the clerk for the record. It's some of the police calls in the last three years. So in the discussion I had with you, I I mentioned that to you, and I asked you about outreach, and and you were you were very candid. You said those are things you didn't know. So in my encouragement, you did reach out to Ms. Lawless and Mr. Olfert's at the Quarters Neighbor Association, and you had conversations on what your business was. So the first thing that I would like to ask you is, the name Johnny's Casino, I think that kind of got our antennas up, like, what is this Johnny's Casino on 25th, 2502 Leavenworth? So tell me how you arrived at that name.
Yes, sir. So it's actually, I think there's a maybe a typo on the agenda. So it's Johnny Casinos, like a proper name, possessive on the casinos. But it's a music or, excuse me, a movie reference. So, yeah, it's it's a Johnny Casino is in the name and just always thought it was kind of a catchy name, obviously. Has people wondering what it is. So from that standpoint, I think maybe it has, you know, served its purpose. But, yeah, so it's just a it's it's the actual proper noun, possessive form.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
Not running a casino, I guess.
Okay. And that's what what? Tell me what your business is, what does it look like? What is it?
So the complete form of it, eventually, the vision will be that it will be like a true bodega-style retail front. We have hygiene products, household goods, like those type of products. We have the skill games that you see, like gas stations in grocery stores and stuff like that. We're hoping to add alcohol, obviously, to that line of offerings. And then as part of this, we had the Health Department in, and we decided to get a permit through them, which we did, so that we could expand our grocery offerings and and do things in the neighborhood that's not really in in our based on our knowledge, isn't really being done, like offering fresh foods, fresh foods, fruits and stuff like that, which the the seems to be devoid of that neighborhood, at least on that side of the freeway.
And and how many of these games of skill that you're going to have here? How many do you have right now?
So we're I think we're targeting just staying at seven is how what we're going to do on it. And then I think when I shared with you, I'm not sure if that'll be profitable or not, and some of that'll be driven by the company that owns those. So we don't we don't really have control if.
And in the conversation we had last, I think I talked to you on Thursday, and then we exchanged a few emails, and one of the things you did in my request is you did have those meetings. In the letter of opposition from Ann Lawless of the Quarters Neighbor Association, I did confirm with her, so she opposed it, after your conversations, which, again, I appreciate, she agreed that she would pull her opposition because of the commitments you've made. And I got to tell you, that area is always a concern to me with what I gave the clerk on the police calls of all the different crimes that the Omaha Police has tracked the last three years. In our conversation, you said that you would agree to move your license from the current on the agenda of a C, that you agreed to move it to a D. Are you in agreement on that on the record?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Madam Clerk, can you please confirm for me what Mr. Watson's license is a D, what that means? Just spell that in layman's terms for all of us.
Sure. So that's off sale of beer and liquor, so no on-site consumption.
So if I want to go into Johnny's Casino under a.
Johnny.
Johnny. Might Johnny, all right. 2502 Leavenworth. If I want if I want to go in with a D, that means I can go get a six-pack of beer to go.
I hope you do.
Correct?
That'd be correct, yes.
With a D, I cannot go in there, grab a six-pack, crack one open, drink it, and play a game of skill, correct?
Correct.
That would be under a C.
Correct.
Okay. Does that make sense to you, Mr. Watson?
Yes, sir.
I wanted to make sure that you didn't walk out here because this it's confusing to me and all of us, I think, when we have these, even Ms. Melton, who's a lawyer, she's got to check on these sometimes. I'm not outing her, but I'm not a lawyer, but those are the things I got to verify. So I just wanted to make sure it's not clear as mud to you that you do understand.
No, I appreciate that. Yes, clear.
Okay. And what are your hours of operation going to be?
So right now, we're looking at like eight to eight, Monday through Friday. We've only been open one weekend so far, 12 to 6. We're working through staffing still. We've hired two people, hopefully looking to hire one or two more as we kind of finish the project of getting up and running. So, yeah, I mean, we don't have an interest in being open bar hours and stuff like that.
So Monday through Friday, you're you're on the record that you want to be 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM?
Yes, sir.
And how about Saturday and Sunday?
So we did 12 to 6. I would just for transparency, I would guess that we'll probably move that slightly, but it probably would not be outside of whatever we're operating Monday through Friday.
So the latest you would say you would want to be open on the weekends would be 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM? Because you said Monday through Friday, you're eight to eight.
Eight to eight, yeah. So I would I would say it'd probably be generally there, yes.
Okay, eight, 8:00 PM on Saturday and Sunday?
Probably.
Probably.
Well, I would say Sunday's probably maybe earlier.
Okay, so eight at the I'm sorry, eight at the latest. I'm not trying to play games with you.
Oh, no. Yeah.
Eight at the latest.
Yeah.
Okay. That makes it easier. Sometimes you poor job ask. So Ms. Clerk, Madam Clerk, in a in a license D, are you allowed to sell shooters?
Yes.
Okay. Would you be willing, I know in one of the emails, I'm not, I'm just saying what was sent to me, are you willing to say you won't sell shooters?
Yeah, yes, and actually, I've already I've made that representation to others that yes, I mean, we have no intent of doing that. Or I grew up on East Side of Omaha. You know, everything west of 72nd was west Omaha, still in my mind here. So I was a central person. My kids go to Cathedral, still down that way. I'm intimately familiar with the challenges of that neighborhood, and our goal is not to just be another convenience store where people can get shooters or cheap liquor and contribute to some of the negative things that are going on in that neighborhood. We really want to try to curate something that is making people want to stop at 25th and Leavenworth rather than just drive by, which I think most of that traffic, there's a lot of car traffic. There's a lot of car traffic. I mean, we have a really high traffic out there. And all those people, I shouldn't say all, I shouldn't speak in absolutes, but a lot of them are just heading straight to downtown and they're not stopping at 25th and Leavenworth. So we're hoping to curate a space that is giving them a reason to stop and want to stop.
Okay.
But, and yes, on the record, we won't sell shooters.
Okay. And is that, Madam Clerk, I'm sorry, I've never bugged you much.
I don't know how that works with a liquor license.
The shooters, the two ounce or less, is that, what milliliter amount is that? Is it 200 milliliters?
That's what I'm just trying to look up right now.
Or is it 375?
It's 50.
It's 50? Is that one ounce?
It's whatever they sell on the airplane.
And this is it? I just wanted to, this is for clarification. I appreciate your patience. I just wanted to make sure we're on the same page on this, so. Because I've been burned on that a few times, not by you, but when I don't get this on the record, so. And while we're looking for that, have you joined the Neighbor Association for the Quarters?
I did, I did. And I appreciate the letter in opposition that they initially submitted. Not as much as I appreciate their later position on it. But I do appreciate, because I think it's, it was helped be a catalyst on having the discussion that we had. And they're, they're just, it turns out that I think we've got an alignment of probably a lot of the same goals for the neighborhood.
And that was, I'm glad we had that conversation and you took the opportunity to reach out, because that's an active Neighbor Association that has made a lot of headway in the challenges that they've dealt with over several years. And we don't want is to take a step back. And I think you having that outreach and getting the Quarters Neighbor Association and others in support, that you had letters of support, that you want to vest an interest in succeeding. But most importantly, I think you said in that email, that you want to be an elevator of the neighborhood and be an example. And that, that means a lot to me, especially when you got the buy-in from others. So that's, that's one of the most important things here, Eliza, did you find that?
I did. Okay, so it's 50 milliliters, 1.7 ounces.
50 milliliters.
So you'd want 50 milliliters or less.
So that's, that's the shooters in the scientific terms of, are you good with not selling the 50 milliliters shooters?
I don't know. I'd have to see a picture of it, probably.
It's 1.7 ounces.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. I appreciate your patience. And again, what I don't want is the law community to get reports that this establishment is having trouble in an area that's challenging. But with the buy-in of the Neighbor Association and business owners that all want that area to succeed. I drive by it five times a week. I'll slip in and check you out. I did today, actually, at lunch, but it was closed about 12:30.
We're hiring here, so.
Okay. You don't want me working there, so. But I appreciate you coming down, again, the outreach and keep that communication open. And with the Neighbor Association, they're a great group right in that area. They really do a nice job, so I'll, and I drop in a couple of times a year to those neighborhood meetings. So I'll be looking for you.
Okay.
And I wish you the best of luck. And I'll make a motion, Mr. President, to support this today with the stipulations.
Yep, I was going to say it'd be a motion to amend to a class D. And did you want to add in the sales of dome bottles, 50 milliliters or less?
I did.
Okay.
So a lot of moving parts. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for, so I want to clarify that, item 10, I want to move that to a class D as in Daniel. And also with the stipulation of 50 milliliters or less, that there be no sales of the shooters. Did I miss anything?
Confirmation that the name is printed wrong. It is in fact Johnny Casino, but nothing we need to do in terms of the application, that is correct?
It is correct on the agenda, or on the application.
And out of curiosity, what is that movie reference?
It's from Grease.
All right. Now we know.
I missed that.
Yeah.
Oh, you cheated.
Now we know. Okay, so there's amendment on the floor to amend to a class D and 1.5 milliliters or less, and a second. Mr. Hug, you're recognized.
I'm just curious as to what your arrangements are with the machines, the games. So you don't own those, you have some kind of.
Yeah, there are, based on my understanding of everything, I think there's a couple of different companies in town. Some of them are local, some of them are national. And they have just like a profit sharing agreement that they'll end up entering into with various establishments where they'll place the games at their cost. And then there's a profit share agreement that comes out of that. So yeah, the operator, the owner of the premises or the tenant or whatever does not actually own the machines.
So can you share with us what that percentage is?
It's a, it's a 50/50 of the net.
50/50?
50/50 split of the net, yes, sir.
And that's just what they play, not what they win?
That's, so net, so gross minus whatever payout.
Okay.
And then there, and then there's the net.
So it's overall net, then?
Yep. So it's, yeah, it's the total net.
Like I said earlier.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you. I appreciate you coming down today, because when I saw this application, I couldn't tell if you're a convenience store, a bar, or a casino. And I think we got that clarified by moving to a class D, that makes sense. And the hours make sense. So my question is, on your application, there's a lot of information that we gleaned from that. And one that I couldn't quite understand is what is your target market? Who are you trying to, who's your customer, who do you want your customer to be in that neighborhood?
So we want to do, or we haven't done a lot of marketing, pretty much zero at this point. But we're wanting to draw from the neighborhood. But we're also, and part of this is because I think the liquor license is an important part of this, is there is a lot of traffic that either works downtown or lives downtown. I mean, that's a really, really busy corridor. And I, and there are a couple of businesses there that are, I think, doing a better job. Like there's an antique shop that's across the street that just hit Best of Omaha at 25th and Leavenworth. Who would have thought, right? And so we're trying to give those people, who we don't think they're really probably stopping to grab grocery items, health items like that, stuff that maybe they're out of toilet paper and, you know, convenience items, stuff like that. And a glass or a bottle of wine or six pack or something like that on the way home. We're trying to create something that we're actually getting them to stop. So neighborhood, but also the very robust market that is just kind of flying by, you know, what people perceive as being on the wrong side of the freeway right now. And I think we were trying to hopefully, if we can get people to feel safe and stop there purposefully, then maybe we can start to gradually, it's a multi-pronged approach, but maybe we can start to get people to change their perception of the area, which I think is good for everybody.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no further lights. There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll need it as amended then.
And as amended.
Motion as amended.
Motion and a second as amended. Roll call.
Hug. Melton.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item 11, to consider a liquor license addition application for Blue Sky Bar and Patio to add an indoor area to their location at 10730 Pacific Street, Suite 10.
Public hearing and vote on number 11 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. President. Members of the Council, David Houghton, 2804 South 87th Avenue. Here on behalf of the applicant, Blue Sky Bar and Patio LLC. Blue Sky Bar and Patio is located at 10730 Pacific Street, Suite 10. And they are requesting an addition to their indoor area just adjacent to the east, which is a 30 by 70 area indoors. If the council has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Harding.
Record, I think Phil was on earlier but had to drop off. So I just wanted to note that the ownership was also on to answer any questions.
That's correct. I think, I don't think he's on any longer, but he's hanging on for a while.
All right. Move for approval. Motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Hug. Melton.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item 12, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Elkhorn Center with a waiver to Section 5384D Lot Frontage located east of 204th and Shirley Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 12 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant, Land Hall Real Estate. This is a commercial mixed-use area at 204th and Shirley with a multifamily component. So I'm really just here to answer any questions that you may have. Caleb Schneider of Lampooners, the consulting engineers, they're also here to answer any questions that you might have.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Hug. Melton.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item 13, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Indian Ridge located southeast of 204th and Ida Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 13 is today. Proponents, please. Yeah, just push it up all the way. Should come on in a minute. There you go.
All right. Good afternoon, members of the Council. Kyle Vole with the Indiana Consulting Group, the civil engineer on the project. And then with me today also is Mark Stidola with Charleston Homes. This is a new single-family residential subdivision located southeast of 204th and Ida Street. There's two different watersheds, or actually, three different watersheds. But basically, the site splits nearly in half where half of the site drains to the south and the other half drains to the north. That's reflected in our phasing on this particular project. So the overall preliminary plat that's before we read it today has 487 lots total. The south phase one, which has the sewer, gravity sewer capability today right away, is a mix of three different price points, three different size of lots. So there's 206 lots in phase one. And I guess the thing I'd point out is there is an existing or a under-construction currently Elkhorn Elementary School just to the east that we abut. And we've taken that into account with our planning on this project. With that, we're here with approval from planning and happy to answer any questions today.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents?
Thank you. Anthony Rogers Wright, 3010 Lincoln Boulevard, Omaha, Nebraska, 68131. I'm not sure what the process is. So I don't know if I, if I'm an opponent, but I'm wondering if we can find out more information about the development, including how much wastewater it will produce, how much energy it will require that each household will use. And I'm also just wondering if we can find out if the development will include any hookups for electric vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none. Public hearing is closed. Do you want a chance to respond or answer those questions?
As far as the, I guess, the question on the electrical design. So the electrical design is performed by OPPD, Omaha Public Power District. And so I'm, as the civil engineer, I'm not familiar with their exact. We apply for an underground service agreement with OPPD. And so that will provide service pedestals to each particular lot. But that doesn't, that doesn't involve, I don't, not involved with the home construction part of it. And then the, if there'd be a charging station or not in each particular house. That's something that comes down the road after the infrastructure is put in on the house. The other question regarding sanitary sewer. This has been sized with the City of Omaha's sewer study. So there's sewer capacity in the sewer system to the south. And then there's a future interceptor that goes along the south side of Flanagan Lake that that north phase would eventually tie into. Did I get all of your questions? Okay.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Hug. Melton.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item 15, a resolution to approve the Green Lake Midtown Apartments Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 3511 Howard Street in an amount up to $418,139.
Public hearing and vote on number 15 is today. Proponents, please.
While we're waiting on this, Bridget Hadley, City of Omaha Planning Department. Before you is the Green Lake Midtown Apartments. Thank you. This is an infill, residential infill redevelopment. And as you can see, it's highlighted, shaded in this yellow along Howard Street, which is right here between 35th Avenue and 35th Streets. It will, it proposes a new apartment building, 15 market rate, market rate units. It will be a three-story building with seven onsite parking stalls plus another three adjacent parking in the right-of-way. The developer is here to answer any questions. The investment in the neighborhood is about 2.9 million. The amount of the TIF is a little over 418,000, which represents about a 14%, a little over 14% of the capital stack and project investment. The project meets the required criteria for TIF is an appropriate land use for the location and complies with the city's comprehensive plan. And we ask you for your approval. I will leave, show you this real quick. This is the site plan. Or the landscaping plan, and then the elevations. East elevation, west elevation, the rear elevation. And then the, which would be the south and the front elevation, which would be the north.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Hi, thank you. Josh Sullivan, 2121 South 64th Plaza, representing the developers. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Any other proponents on number 15?
Hi, Joyce Mondrosik, 619 South 37th Street. Live just a couple of blocks away from this. Really like the infill development. I'd like to know if there's anything the developer or the city could do to bring down the price of the apartments. Market rate is not affordable. It's 25 to 40% of my income as a working-class person. And I make $21 an hour, which is much higher than most working-class people make in the City of Omaha. So I'd like to know if there's anything the City of Omaha could do or this developer could do to bring the price down on the apartments a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? We're still proponents? No, this is proponents? Yep. Those in favor still? Yep.
You young folks. Cheryl Weston, 1128 Pacific Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68110. I know this is probably in vain, but the purpose of the Nebraska Tax Increment TIF is to help cities pay for infrastructure and redevelopment projects in blighted areas while stimulating economic development to help to finance the public costs associated with a private development project. I would like to bring back some of the comments that was made a little earlier on that item 14. When you talked about, Councilwoman Harding talked about the Affordable Health, Affordable Housing Plan. Mr. Rowe mentioned it and Councilwoman Melton mentioned it. So when I look at this on item 15, and as this gentleman just spoke, proposes a new three-story apartment building with 15 market rate units to be constructed on that site. All this talk that we've had continuously about affordable housing, over and over, state level, city level, everywhere. Just mentioned earlier, 30,000 homes, that's what you're short of. That's supposed to be for affordable housing. I do not find how this meets the criteria for infrastructure for blighted areas. I do not see where this says in any of this market rate or affordable housing. So if this is to be 15 market rate housing, I think TIF should not be allowed, but it will be voted on and approved today, most likely. So my comment is, it should be affordable.
Okay. And Cheryl, just for clarity, you are in favor of 15? Or are you opposed to 15?
I am opposed to, I thought I was a pro.
No, you're a pro.
Opponent against.
We'll just note that for the record that you were in fact opposed. Okay.
So are we opponent or proponent?
We're still on proponents in favor.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that's what I was trying to get it clarified was opponent.
All right, we got you. All right.
I'm done. On opponent.
So any other proponents that want to speak at this point, those in favor? Seeing none. Now I'll go to other opponents. These are opponents now.
I'm sorry about that for Ms. Cheryl. I listened to too much punk rock in college. Anthony Rogers Wright again. I would say that the only reason why I'm an opponent of this, I'm sure all of you are aware that back in September, State Auditor Mike Foley has warned about the overuse of TIF proceeds. As a matter of fact, Mr. Foley concluded in his 26-page report that I know that him and the mayor are having back and forth of on right now, indicated that a lot of the money that is being used regarding TIFs could, and this is in his own words, could be used for some other public purpose, include paying the cost of local redevelopment projects and also for public transportation and public schools. So I'm just wondering, you know, in all the cities that I've done urban planning in, that's my trade, Los Angeles, New York City, Chicago, Denver, in order to essentially enjoy the largesse of the people and essentially a 0% interest loan, usually the developer has to give something back. So my issue is, is when do we shift to more of a TIF-for-tat system where the people are actually getting something back from the developer in the form, as Ms. Cheryl and others have said, in this case, affordable housing and real affordable housing? So that's why I stand in objection to this because I think that our city council is making too many present-day decisions that are going to come back to bite us in the future. And if we're going to do that, we should at least get something in return. Last thing I'll say is, because I know that there's people on the city council who are as pro-worker as I am, as a condition for these TIFs, do we know, are the workers going to be unionized? Are there going to be project labor agreements and things like that? And I just think that giving too much to the developer and not getting anything back in return is getting a little bit too perniciously proximate to tyranny. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, 68132, and ditto. My goodness, as I remember, this area is largely commercial buildings and rental apartments and things. So who's going to really be paying the property tax? Do you charge property tax to a rental person? Or to the owner of the building? And when is that, that TIF going to be paid off by who? How large of an area from that property are people going to pay this so-called ad valorem tax? And by the way, I think you left a word out. The Attorney General, I think, uses the proper word. Ad valorem property taxes, to get it. Somebody that wrote these things leaves out a word. Now he's either right or he's wrong. Excuse me for, you know, being that way, but that's, common sense, I guess, doesn't apply anymore. But I wonder if everybody that lives in those buildings 50 feet in any of their direction knows that they're going to pay ad valorem property taxes? Because the guy that's building it isn't until 20 years from now or 25? And by the way, on the way down here today, I followed a truck that said Palladino Development Corporation Company. But he also sells and rents apartments. So does Jay Nodle. He rents or sells very expensive townhomes right across from my dental office on Leavenworth Street. 400 and some thousand dollar units. He gets TIF. When do the, when do the people get it? I'd like to build a house, will you build one for me and I don't have to pay it till I've been dead 15 or 20 years?
Thank you. Any other opponents to number 15? Seeing none, public carrying is closed, Mr. Roe, you're recognized.
Thank you, sir, I wanted to clarify a couple of things and Josh, could you come up? So were you a part of the application for the TIF process?
Correct, yep.
So can you answer the question for me, would you do this project if TIF was not available?
I mean, I think there's a need in the area for this. It would make the project more challenging, absolutely. But I think the need for housing in the area, I think, is much more needed. So to answer your question, yes, probably. It'd be much more difficult for us as a new developer? No, I mean, as a developer starting out, it'd be much more difficult to do it, so no, if we would not get TIF, we would not be able to do this project.
Can you describe the condition of the lot? I did not drive by the property, but I did look it up on the Google map. And it looks to me like it's just a vacant lot today.
Correct.
And it's going to be sandwiched in between a couple of apartment buildings or maybe a single-family houses, I can't remember.
Correct, yep.
But it's definitely, as Mr. Store said, an area with multifamily and so it's not going to look out of place.
No, absolutely not.
In that location. Do you know, just for everybody in the room's education, how many construction jobs this was going to result in building this property?
I do not have the answer to that.
I'm thinking about 75.
Yeah, I mean, I think that sounds about right. I think with other developments in the area, I think as far as to address the affordable issue, I think there's much larger developments going on in the area. I think ours is going to bring, you know, the cost down a little bit. We're looking at not building the massive seven-story building going up over there as well. Ours is targeting definitely more affordable. 75 jobs, correct, as the construction, you're right.
Okay, and then the last thing I want to mention is it's not an extremely blighted area. So it is a, it's in a 15-year TIF. So it's not a 20 or 25-year program, it's a 15-year program. Just wanted to let you know, Larry, what that amounted to. You know, I appreciate guys like Justin making a $2.9 million investment in housing. I really do appreciate that. And I think it does, yes, this is market rate housing. But I think when you look at market rate housing, that kind of affects the affordability as well. The more housing units that are on the market, the better it's going to be for Omaha.
Of course.
And to go into, into our building seasons every year, so many units short. It just, it just increases the price and the demand. And I think the more that we can build, so I appreciate guys like Todd Highstand and Justin Jake Hoppy, guys that are willing to take the risk and put that much of their own money on the line, hoping that they can rent it and make a return on their investment, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bagley.
Thanks, Mr. President, a couple of quick questions.
Of course.
In the heart of my district, it's near Blackstone and the Med Center. I know anybody familiar with my district understands the great expansion of the Med Center at Catalyst Project west of Saddle Creek. UNMC is building, I don't know, I can't remember how many apartments up on 39th and Dewey. So I'm assuming you are catering to UNMC, the demand for housing for students, is that a fair take?
Yeah, of course, absolutely. With that area, I think you have to go into it with that mindset of the target people you're targeting. I think Med Center employees are a big part of it as well, but there's other demographics as well, I think, in the area.
I lose track, but I think they're, if not the largest, one of the largest employers.
Hundred percent, yep.
Yeah. And it's walking distance to Blackstone and to the Med Center. So I appreciate you coming down and I'll make a motion to support this today, Mr. President, thank you.
Motion and second to approve, Ms. Milton.
Thanks, I just wanted to take note. This TIF is only for a little over 400,000, I think, 418,000. And I looked at the increase in the property value, it's going to be about a $46,000 increase. So I'm guessing that this will be paid off in less than 10 years. Because you pay whatever that increase in value is, that's how much goes towards the payout. So even though this, you could have up to 15 years, if this all remains what it looks like, I think your payoff will be 10 years or less.
I mean, that's always the goal, right?
Right, and then the excess ad valorem property taxes will go into all of the other property rolls. So this is an investment in the future for everybody that's receiving property tax.
Yep, absolutely.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harding.
I just wanted to wish Justin and Josh and the rest of the partners good luck.
Thank you, appreciate it.
There's a motion and a second to approve, roll call.
Hug. Milton. Roe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thank you, guys.
Item 16 and 17 can be considered together. Item 16 is a resolution to approve the Mason Place Rose Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located southwest of 33rd and Mason Streets in an amount up to $1,099,237. Item 17, a resolution to approve the Third Amendment to the Uptown District Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan to eliminate Site 7 of Phase 2 located southwest of 33rd and Mason Streets.
Public carrying and vote on items 16 and 17 are today, proponents please.
Good afternoon, Bridget Hadley, City Planning. Again, another residential infill project. And this is on vacant, vacant land, just as the other project was vacant land. This particular project proposes to amend an existing TIF redevelopment project plan called the Uptown District that had four different phases. There were row homes that were proposed about, well, upwards of 50 have been completed or started. And since then, this project, the Uptown District, has been amended to create new projects. And this particular project called the Mason Place Rose is a new project coming out of that. So Uptown District is amended, which is item number 17. And this item before you is Mason Place Rose, item number 16. So item number 16 is a residential infill for 15 market rate and for sale townhomes that are arranged in two row home structures. And they are going to be located at this site that is shaded in yellow. So this is Mason Street and then 33rd. And this particular parcel was a part of the former, or of the Uptown District TIF. So the 15 market rate townhomes will be completed and there will be three stories. Each unit will have a two-stall garage and sell for around $430,000. The total investment in the neighborhood is about 6.3 million. And the TIF support is a little over 1 million, almost 1.1 million. And that represents about 17.4% of the capital stack or total project investment. The project meets the required criteria for TIF, is an appropriate land use for the location and complies with the city's comprehensive master plan or comprehensive plan. And with that, we'd ask for your approval. Here are a few of the renderings. That's how it will lay on the site plan. Go out a little bit. So this is looking from 33rd Street and then the side view on the, I believe that would be the north, so going down the hill. And I know the project owner is here to answer questions.
Any other proponents that want to speak today?
Alex Jensen, Milestone Development, 6324 South 118th Street. We have, we think is a really nice project, provide infill, for-sale housing. We've met with the neighborhood twice, once in August 5th. Had a big turnout and the second one was on September 25th, his plans developed. A good turnout as well. Worked closely with some of the immediate neighbors to kind of get their feedback, get an understanding of what they'd like to see here. I know there's been a challenging lot in the past and so we've worked with, close with them. And they're generally pro-development, just the right development for the neighborhood. And I think this is something that, you know, they're going to provide 15 new long-term residents to the neighborhood that will, you know, care greatly for their properties and just fill in a vacant lot. So it's something that I think the neighborhood can be really proud of.
Thank you. Other proponents today?
Hi, Joyce Von Drossick, 619 South 37th Street. Love the row houses, wish the whole city was row houses, frankly. I would just ask again about the affordability of these houses. Can I get a number about what's the average price going to be for these units? Do we know?
We can ask that question for you.
Yeah. Even with my above minimum wage wages as a poor working-class person, I cannot afford to buy most houses that are coming on the market these days. And I would love to own a row house in a dense part of the city like this. I simply will not be able to afford something like this. And so I would ask again, specifically because Councilman Milton, Councilor Milton, in the last section, you made a comment that made it seem like the amount of TIF being spent was a good investment for what we were getting back for it. And I would just ask if we increased the amount of TIF that we're giving to these projects, could the price be lowered on both houses like these and also apartments being built? Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents?
Cheryl Weston, 1124 Pacific Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68108, proponent. Opponent. Opponent. Clarify, and I understand very well that coming up before now is just, Martin Luther King used to say, "If you don't stand for something when you know it's right, you fall for everything." We know this isn't right for what the purpose of the TIF was proposed for. You brought up on the last one about the jobs. Those are temporary jobs. They're only construction jobs during that time. That's not bringing the economic development to it, it's only on a temporary basis. Also, I would like for clarification, so it could be on the record. When you mentioned about TIF programs, is there any TIF program, any TIF project that comes up that doesn't have a negative value? The question on that application says, would you do this if you didn't get TIF? Anybody in their right mind, do you think they're going to say yes? I commend that young man who said yes, honestly, he stood and said, we'd probably still do it. But that's part of how come TIF gets through is because you say there's a negative in it. So I fully understand this will pass. And as that young man said, this is not affordable. These are homes that are going to be built, 430,000, the average one. I just don't understand how you can keep setting and saying publicly about affordable housing where 30,000 homes short and none of this that comes up for TIF is affordable. Thank you.
Thank you. Other opponents?
Anthony Rogers Wright again, 3010 Lincoln Boulevard. Yes, just in continuing on with, I think, the befuddling nature that we all have regarding who are TIFs really supposed to benefit? Now, one of our city council members indicated that building new houses would increase affordability. I will try to get this report from the Urban Institute, which refutes that. Simply building, and it states, simply building more housing units does not guarantee a decrease in housing costs. Other factors like location, construction costs, zoning regulations and market demand also play a significant role in determining housing affordability. Other key points to consider, market dynamics, high-end construction, zoning restrictions, cost of development. And to effectively reduce housing costs, a more comprehensive approach might be necessary, including incentivizing development of affordable housing units, addressing zoning regulations like reforming zoning laws for allowing for greater housing density and diverse housing types, and finally investing in infrastructure, which includes improving public transportation and community amenities to make areas more desirable for more diverse housing. Now, we've heard that these homes will be going for about $435,000. The median home price in Omaha, Nebraska in 2024 is $298,800, which is about $161 per square foot, a 3% increase from last month, I might add. So again, we are giving the people's money away with a 0% interest loan and we are getting nothing back. And finally, even though these jobs are going to be temporary, again, we have people on this city council who were endorsed by local labor groups. Can we please get an answer about what type of construction workers will be hired? Will they be adhering to the Davis Bacon, the federal Davis Bacon Law prevailing wages, project labor agreements? Will these construction workers be unionized construction workers? I think we have a right to know that because, again, our money is being used. And just because we live in a right-to-work state does not mean that we have to live in a right-to-work city.
Any other opponents today?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, 68132. 15 and 16 are a little bit different than 14 in this respect. It's, as I recall, these areas are largely residential, but an awful lot of apartments rather than single-family homes. And as you drive these areas, you see a lot of green space, parks. And you're going to, now you're going to fill that with these kind of buildings and we're going to lose part of the skyline too. I guess that's going to affect the, the green spaces and climate change and all kinds of things. But if there's not very many single-family residences in that area, there's a lot of apartment buildings. Excuse me, who is going to pay, once again, how far on each side of the property? Who's going to pay the ad valorem property taxes? You're now admitting that it's property taxes. But who's going to pay it? Amy said it'll be paid, told him it'd be, may be paid off in 10 years. I'm sorry. He's got a loan. But what most people don't know, and we're not lawyers, we don't- But what most people don't know, and we're not lawyers, we don't practice lawfare, but what they do is they declare a property zero value. The developer buys it maybe at zero value, and that's what his taxes are based on. And he gets the loan for maybe ten years, fifteen, twenty years, depending on whether it's blighted or not. It might be blighted today, but not blighted yesterday. I'm in an area such as that. And you'll be building on that real soon, once Mr. Fuster's, maybe raising my taxes for it. I don't like that, because you're not being transparent. That's the main problem. You're not being transparent. You do not explain these things. Last time I complained about it, a little man came down there and handed me a piece of paper from his office, because I don't want to go down there and talk to everybody and get that same piece of paper that doesn't answer the questions. Once again, he handed it to me in person, interrupted me in this meeting, and it doesn't answer the questions. These people know some of the questions and then the answers, but you people will not discuss it. I'm surprised you didn't call them out of order or interrupt them. Next year's gonna be a lot different, because every politician will be held to account for things that have gone awry, trying to do better for everybody when you know you can't. And the same thing goes for this monstrosity of green space.
Any other opponents to sixteen and seventeen? Seeing none, public carers closed. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Just wanted to clarify for the record that tax increment financing, there's no zero percent loan associated with it. There's no city money involved with it. But having said that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion and second to approve, no for the lights, roll call.
Hug, Melton, Row, vaguely, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Pass six to zero.
Council members, before we move to the consent agenda items, I want to entertain a request to move number item forty-nine up to our agenda at this point. This is a street renaming. We have former mayor Mike Fahey here with us to address this item, so we wanted to call him down and recognize him and welcome him to the city council. And as he approaches, as he approaches, I just want to say that we know we'll need to amend the cover letter here, which doesn't quite have the street accurate to what the application says, which should be twelve to Thirteenth Street on Cass, which Councilmember Melton is prepared to handle. The floor is yours. Proponents, please.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen of the city council, honored to be back here in your chamber. I understand I'm following Hal again, once again. So that's great. I will be brief. I know you're very, very busy, and I appreciate the opportunity to make our case in support of this resolution. What I tried to do, and I want to be very brief, is I looked up some things on my friend, Fred Suarez, and the World Herald wrote some pretty neat articles about College World Series and about Fred's part in that development. And with your indulgence, I'd like to read you just a short part of it. Now, this is, it starts out based on what happened in 2024 World Series. College World Series unofficially kicked off Friday, this is the last Friday of the College World Series, down on Omaha Baseball Village. Among the tents and T-shirts, hats and passions for the CWS, they'll raise a glass to a friend and colleague, Mr. Fred Suarez. And he says, "That's only fitting." And Tom Chitell wrote this, so just you'll know. Baseball Village was Fred Suarez's dream, his brainchild, his baby. He won't be there, but he'll be everywhere you look. Fred died at eighty years old unexpectedly on April twenty-second. But he left behind a legacy of family, friends, stories, and one cool CWS tradition, a place where folks eat, drink, stop, shop, and share the CWS together. We didn't know we needed the Omaha Baseball Village until we had it. Then we wondered how we ever lived without it. That's the story of the ever-evolving College World Series Downtown Edition. This is the thirteenth CWS Downtown. It's come together so nicely, you would think it had been there the whole time. We've come a long way since 2011, that first CWS Downtown, when everything felt strange, forced, and awkward. It was a madhouse because there wasn't much down there at the time, as you all remember. Pat McAvoy was the manager of Rocco's Pizza across the street from Swabs Field. They weren't, this is his quote, "There weren't a ton of options. Nobody really knew what to do yet." How do you build a CWS tradition from the dirt? The same way coaches and players have been creating new history inside the park. It happens because there's a plan, and sometimes fate and magic happen to behind the bar. It happens because of men like Fred Suarez at the Old Mattress Factory and other people that started the Rocco's Pizza Place. The tailgating and Thirteenth Street sidewalk carnival outside Rosenblatt has given way to Baseball Village and Rocco's Jello Shots. There's a new Dignerville, Dinkerville, a family-friendly version with live music and food and Dinkerville Lager, taking shape two blocks north of the stadium at Millwork Commons. The blur of tailgate at Hilton is a CWS party that has become a staple in its twelfth year. It happened, it all happened. All the passion and love didn't leave when Rosenblatt went away. It needed to be reset, reshaped, and recreated downtown. Now, Fred was an attorney, worked for the National Park Service for forty years. He graduated from Creighton Law School and was a very big Omaha sports fan, the man with an entrepreneurial spirit. His friends, some of you guys know these guys, Ren Smith and Bill Carver, said that Suarez used to purchase surface parking lots in downtown Omaha for future development. In fact, the Union Pacific Building, his parents were sitting on one of them. In 2005, Suarez purchased the parking lot next to the Old Mattress Factory. When the news of a downtown stadium broke in 2007, Suarez, Smith, and Mark Ennbach joined the owners of the Mattress Factory to open a bar and grill in the building. When the site of the new baseball park was chosen, Smith and Suarez went to work on a plan. Fred called, this is Smith talking, "Fred called me one day and said, 'I hope you don't mind, I copyrighted the name Omaha Baseball Village.'" Suarez had an idea for a fan engagement area, but first they needed the land between the Mattress Factory and Zestros, was going to go across the street from the stadium. That land belonged to the Union Pacific Railroad. Thinking someone might try to put a restaurant in that spot, Smith said the Mattress Factory investors and the owner of Zestros came together to purchase the UP land. Almost done. Then Suarez got busy building his baseball village. During that time, Fred was going around the country, looking at different cities, see what they had did for events. He would go to Minneapolis, Memphis, all these places, and brought back a lot of ideas. He said, "I can incorporate these here." It wasn't something he did by the seat of his pants. He did this, he did his homework, and he wanted that to be his idea, which it was. Now, I'll stop there, but I really would appreciate your affirmative action on this particular issue. I think Fred deserves it, as it made a tremendous contribution to the CWS, and will have it for a lot more years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for providing that background.
I'll happy to take any questions.
Are there any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public carers closed. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Well, actually, I think I-
Well, I need to make the motion because we need to change it. I just want to thank Mayor Fahey for coming down. For coming down here and sitting through our little bit lengthy, lengthy meeting. I'm sure you sat through a lot of those in your previous times. Thank you. With that, what I'd like to do is make a motion to amend the second paragraph to state that it will be for the designation of Fred Suarez Way on Twelfth to Thirteenth Street on Cass Street. That will be my motion.
Thank you. Mr. Harding, was your light on, too?
It was.
Okay. There's a motion and second for that amendment. You're recognized.
Actually, let's vote on that, and then I'll make my comments after.
There's no for the lights on the amendment. Roll call.
Hug, Melton, Row, vaguely, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero.
Do we have to vote as amended?
Yeah, you do. But I'll make my comments now. So, Mayor, thanks for being down here today, and there truly isn't a better deserving person than Freddie on this. Freddie was very understated and under the radar, but a force to be reckoned with. And I know that maybe, he did, actually, you probably know better than me, but a couple of the Camino de Santiago walks, is that right? The two of them, did he do, or did he do more than two, which is basically a six-hundred-mile walk? And I'll bet maybe along one of those walks, he was moved by the, by someone greater than us to come up with some of these ideas. And what he's done for the College World Series, for downtown Omaha, and I remember when, I think the first time I met Fred was on one of his parking garages with his, maybe his brother-in-law, Joe. But he had a great vision and believer in downtown, and he recently passed away, but he will greatly be missed, and I think to have a commemorative street naming for him is very appropriate. Thank you for moving this forward.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Motion's approved.
It's amended.
Motion and second, roll call.
Hug, Melton, Row, vaguely, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero.
Thanks for being down here again, and happy birthday on Friday. Okay, council members, we'll go move back to the consent agenda.
Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
Public carers on agenda items eighteen through twenty-nine were held on December tenth. I don't see any for the lights. Roll call. Is there a motion? Motion and a second, roll call.
Hug, Melton, Row, vaguely, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero.
Public carers on agenda items thirty through forty-eight are today. If you wish to address the council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent, these are items thirty through forty-eight.
Amanda Baron of the Spencer Fane Law Firm, one-three-eight, one-five, FNB Parkway, and I'm here for item number thirty. I'm representing Lucy's thirty-one, thirty-seven, Lucy's five-one-one-zero, and Lucy's Applewood on the application for the appointment of Corey Hagman as manager for all three Lucys. And I'm just here to answer any questions today.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other testifiers on these items? Going once, going twice. Public carers are closed. There's a motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Hug, Melton, Row, vaguely, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item fifty, a resolution to approve the nomination of Sarah L. Roundtree Street as a commemorative street name on Grant Street from Twenty-sixth Street to Twenty-seventh Street.
Public carion and vote on number fifty is today. Proponents, please. Did you want to come down? Okay, yeah, no problem. Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none. This is number fifty. Are there any opponents? Seeing none, public carers closed? Motion and second to approve. Roll call.
Hug, Melton, Row, vaguely, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero.
Congratulations.
Yes. Thank you.
Item fifty-one, a resolution to approve the nomination of Nellie Mae Webb Street as a commemorative street name on Fortieth Street from Pinkney Street to Pratt Street.
Public carion and vote on number fifty-one is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public carers closed? There's a motion and second to approve. Roll call.
Hug, Melton, Row, vaguely, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item fifty-two, a resolution to approve the appointment of Ryan Lawson to the Blackstone Business Improvement Board.
Public carion and vote on number fifty-two is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public carers closed?
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Hug, Melton, Row, vaguely, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item fifty-three, a resolution to approve the reappointment of Charlene Rogers to the Omaha Municipal Land Bank.
Public carion and vote on number fifty-three is today. Proponents, please.
Cheryl Weston, eleven-twenty-four Pacific Street, six-eight, one-zero-eight. I am here to support Ms. Charlene Rogers as a board of directors for the Omaha Land Bank. She's done an amazing job on making that very accessible to the community. She's brought out some good points. She's had some questions. She's done a great job on as becoming president of the board. She's also with Seventy-five North, so I think that she should be, her directorship should be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public carers closed? There's a motion and second to approve. Roll call.
Hug, Melton, Row, vaguely, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item fifty-four, a resolution to approve the appointment of Luanne Godding to the Omaha Municipal Land Bank.
Public carion and vote on number fifty-four is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents?
Cheryl Weston, eleven-twenty-four Pacific Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six-eight, one-zero-eight. I am a proponent. I have nothing personal against Luanne. I've only known her from being on the school board, attended several meetings with her. The problem I have with this is, this is just to me and to others, this is another friend appointment for this district or for the Omaha Land Bank. If you look at, which was in your paperwork, her application mainly is all with school, to do with the school and her family business. She's great as far as her educational, but it shouldn't be the reason for being on the board of the Omaha Land Bank. They, as I said before, there's been some great changes that have been made. It's been people who have really been involved with real estate, with the ideal of developing North Omaha, District Two. So I'm opposed for that. I think that it should be people who are going to bring something that is involved with the Omaha Land Bank, real estate and so forth. I think it should be someone who's going to be that. I know that there'll be said that, you know, we have a problem in getting people on the boards here in Omaha, but that's not really true. It's that when you have to have recommendation from the mayor to be on these boards, without that, you're not going to get on that board. There has been other people who have applied for the Omaha Land Bank, but they don't get that favoritism. So I'm here to oppose that. I'm sure it'll pass, but thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents? Seeing none, public carers closed. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. I just wanted to, unlike other boards, we're required to have certain people from each district. So in order to be on the board for this appointment, you actually had to have to physically live in District Seven, and it also requires that you have some kind of financial banking accounting. So you have to have both those qualifications. Actually, the director of the land bank contacted me and said, "Amy, can you help me find somebody that can fill this in your district?" And I have to say, I called a number of people attempting to find somebody that is willing to, by the way, volunteer for this job and was willing to do it. So I actually, I called Ms. Godding and asked her if she would do this. She said, "Amy, I'll have to think about it. Let me go meet with the executive director of the land bank. Let me see what..." I said, "You know, you're qualified and you live in District Seven." So I actually had to kind of twist Luanne's arm a little bit. So I actually had to kind of twist Luanne's arm a little bit, but after meeting with the executive director, she absolutely loves what the land bank is doing. So she said, you know what? I'll put my application in. So they kind of interviewed each other, so to speak. Ms. Godding went down and met, and they had a long conversation and a talk, and then Ms. Godding sent her application in, and that's, of course, I did a follow-up for the mayor. So this actual opening has been open for quite a while, so we really did need someone to fill it. So I thought that was, unlike other board appointments, this one, this one's a little more interesting on how we got there. And so with that, I will motion to approve Ms. Godding.
There's a motion in a second. Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm a, I know Luanne, and I've talked to her about this appointment, and really appreciate her willingness to step into the role. She's qualified for the role. She's going to bring a different perspective maybe than some others, and I think that's good, and I think that's the why, that's the reason that the land bank is comprised the way it is. And so I think, I think she's a great, will be a great addition to the land bank board, and I'll support her 100%.
Thank you. Mr. Harding.
It's unfortunate, maybe the person who was opposed to this nomination maybe didn't understand that it is, as Ms. Melton pointed out, that it has to come from District Seven. So, and she is qualified, meets the qualification standards, and is excited about doing the job. Procedurally, and I know this may be a little bit out of order, but it is part of the procedure that we've been asking these board nominations to come down and appear in person, really at the request of one person, and it seems like it's been multiple times over the past couple of months that we were making these requests, and then for those people to appear to be questioned, and then that person who's making those requests doesn't even have the courtesy to be at the meeting to ask those questions. So I think we should move these board nominations back to the consent agenda. People can certainly voice their opinions, as was done here today, when they're on the consent agenda. So I would respectfully request that we make that move for future agendas.
Okay, thank you. There's a motion in a second to approve. Roll call.
Hug. Melton. Row. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item 55, a resolution to approve a settlement claim with Jim Adler and Associates on behalf of Rosalia Castro in the amount of $50,000.
Public hearing and vote on number 55 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Hug. Melton. Row. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item 56, an ordinance to approve an agreement with Flyability Inc. for the lease of a drone to be utilized by the Sewer Maintenance and Flood Control Division.
Public hearing on number 56 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Next item.
Item 57, an ordinance to approve an agreement with the Women's Center for Advancement in the amount of $52,063 and to authorize funding from the City of Omaha's fiscal year 2024 Stop Violence Against Women grant.
Public hearing on number 57 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item 58, an ordinance to approve an agreement with Douglas County in the amount of $78,806 and to authorize funding from the City of Omaha's fiscal year 2024 Stop Violence Against Women grant.
Public hearing on number 58 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item 59, an ordinance to approve the City of Omaha and Douglas County joint application for the fiscal year 2024 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program.
Public hearing on number 59 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I'm against this primarily because I think there are various community partners that are already taking care of the crisis in mental health and education programs, correction programs, people like Susie Buffett, for example, Sherwood, and outside organizations such as National Association of Counties that we listen to rather than to our citizens. So maybe back off on hoping for another grant because it might not be there next year because the federal government's running short of funds due to ARPA. Thank you.
Any other opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed.
Item 60, an ordinance to approve an agreement with the Metro Drug Task Force to provide intelligence analyst services.
Public hearing on number 60 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item 61, an ordinance to establish a Good Life District Economic Development Program.
Public hearing on number 61 is today.
Jeffrey Hofer, 16820 Francis Street. I'm also here with Larry Jobin. And just a brief description of what this is, is it's really the ordinance as contemplated in the state statute. We actually had our vote approved November 5th as part of the general election, and we're very thankful for getting that approved by the City of Omaha and just a vote of the people. So it's a good next step for us. This document lays out for how our Good Life District Economic Development Program will be carried out in partnership with the city, and yeah, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. No seeing any lights. Thanks for your patience today. Next item.
One public hearing can be held for items 62 and 63 for crossroads. Item 62 is an ordinance to approve an amended and restated public improvement and parking development agreement. Item 63 is an ordinance to approve and authorize a lease purchase agreement with the City of Omaha Public Facilities Corporation to provide funds for the crossroads redevelopment site.
Public hearings on items 62 and 63 are today.
Council Ross Lerner, 6840 Dodge Street. I moved to Omaha, Nebraska this summer and bought four pizza restaurants from South Dakota, where I was for five years, before that Louisville, Kentucky. I can see the crossroads from my backyard. It became very clear within just a few weeks of being here of what that property could become, and my previous professional life back in Louisville, I had a lot of commercial real estate, and firsthand witnessed how intelligent city involvement in supporting a project with a solid financial base that a developer can work from typically works out and works out well, and I think it's going to help that part of the city, improve my quality of life, direct property owner, and hopefully some of my businesses. And I think it's good stuff. I read about it, and I also haven't been downtown yet. I've only lived here about four months, so got to see the courthouse, come downtown, and it was perfect timing.
Great. Thanks for being down here and welcome to Omaha.
Thank you, thank you. Topper's Pizza. Yeah, so I went, commercial real estate slowed down the last few years. I decided to come out of semi-retirement and run pizza restaurants. So what district do I live in?
You're in mine. District one. Yeah.
Mr. Festerson. Good to meet you. Hopefully we'll see each other in.
Sounds good. Thank you. Thanks for being here. Any other proponents on these items? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item 79, a resolution to approve the purchase agreement with Bell Truxton for a helicopter for the Omaha Police Department.
Public hearing and vote on number 79 is today. Proponents, please.
Sorry, what?
79. This is the supplemental agenda?
Did you just skip over a bunch?
Nope. This is the supplemental agenda, number 79. Proponents, please.
Good evening or afternoon, City Council. My name is Michaela. I reside at 5735 North 33rd Ave, Omaha, Nebraska, 68111. My name is Michaela Atkins, and I am a community organizer who is here on behalf of Youth Elect to, let me move that down some.
Yes, thanks.
Is that better? There we go. Okay, I am here on behalf of Youth Elect to oppose the resolution that would allow OPD to purchase a new helicopter. Youth Elect is a space for young people to build their collective power to advocate on a number of local issues right here in Omaha. And at Youth Elect, we recognize the importance of public participation and our relationship with city leadership, and we believe that in order to create and maintain a healthy relationship, there needs to be trust and transparency between the two powers. The lack of transparency from our leadership has led to frustrated communities that are taking on, or taking in matters into their own hands by providing the care and resources that our cities should be responsible for. We saw this recently when one of the largest homeless shelters in the city lost its power and could not provide warmth for our houseless population. Instead of seeing the city step in and aid, we watched the community come together with food, water, and blankets. We saw this last year when tenants were forced to leave their homes when their apartments...
I just want to make sure you're addressing item number 79, right? This is a police equipment purchase?
Correct.
Okay, make sure you dress that up.
Yep. You'll hear it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Let me go back and get my place.
Sorry, interrupted you there.
No, you're okay, you're okay. Okay. Okay, we saw this again last year when tenants were forced to leave their homes when their apartments were shut down due to unlivable conditions. The City of Omaha sat while our community went to work to provide food, shelter in hotels in other people's homes, and funds to help people get through a difficult time. Lastly, we've had multiple apartment complex fires this year that have displaced many families and even injured some, yet our city has not provided significant support, let alone even a statement to address this ongoing issue. These instances have contributed to our reason for being here today and opposing the new helicopter for OPD. Not only did OPD irresponsibly crash two helicopters, but they also refused to vet pilots in their initial plans. It is extremely frustrating as a community member to see no accountability when these types of errors take place. Why did no one question the vetting process for these pilots? We need more initiative from the city council to step in early and ensure that we have checks and balances from the beginning so that when issues such as these arise, we are prepared to address them with solutions that make sense for our city and its people. There is a clear misalignment between the people of the City of Omaha and the elected officials of Omaha. We need leadership who will prioritize issues identified by the community such as affordable housing, reliable public transportation that is not a streetcar, and deep-rooted poverty in our red line neighborhoods. I would like to remind our elected officials that your vote today impacts our vote in April and May. We hope to see a vote that reflects the voices of your constituents. We urge city council, our city council, to vote no and begin investing in the community where those efforts are especially needed during these times. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, City Council. Joyce Von Drossick, 619 South 37th Street. I have personally had many different interactions with the Omaha Police Department, and they've not been great. I've come here and spoken to you about them before. Personally, I have been harassed by the Omaha Police Department with their helicopter. I was out walking on the Field Club Trail one night, late at night, at midnight, and the police helicopter went by me, and I decided to exercise my First Amendment right and raise one of my hands towards the sky and the police helicopter because I know that the Omaha Police have night vision that they take out with them every time they go out in their helicopter, because they are just blanket surveilling the entire city on a regular basis and spending exorbitant amounts of money keeping that helicopter in the air and repairing it and paying for a new one, and I do not appreciate the blanket surveillance that the Omaha Police Department uses with their helicopter. I understand that there are legitimate uses for the helicopter, traffic situations, search and rescue situations, where even the technology I've just mentioned is actually quite useful and good, but the Omaha Police Department, as a pattern of behavior, frequently abuses their power, and they don't deserve a penny more from the city, especially when other advocates for different things in the city, different programs, and I'll specifically bring up bicycle lane infrastructure right now. We had, advocates had to beg this government to pay for money to extend the two-way bike lane on Harney Street for a couple extra months, and it ended up, and nobody wanted to do it. We had to wait for an anonymous rich person to make a donation to the city to keep a bike lane around, and here you guys are spending $4 million on another police helicopter for an organization that has repeatedly proven that it is not trustworthy with the resources or the power that it has. Please vote no on this. I know you're all going to vote yes unanimously on it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. I just think it's important to note that the City of Omaha is not using general fund money, not using property tax dollars. We received a grant from the federal government. Actually, Senator Deb Fischer helped us get this grant, and the city council already voted to accept the grant on September 24th of this year. So we've already accepted the money. The money can only be used for the helicopter because that's what the grant money was for. So we aren't spending any other money. This money can't go for any other programs, services, it can't fix the roads, it can't do anything else other than pay for the helicopter, otherwise we just give the money back. So I just think that that's important, important to note, and I just want to also note that I appreciate Senator Fisher's assistance in helping us get this grant and provide the resources to the Omaha Police officers that need it, and I can tell you, they use that helicopter. I've gone up with a ride-along with him once, and there were multiple calls on there, and it was very helpful, especially when you do have the traffic issues with the speeders that I know all of us are having complaints about, because it is a lot safer to chase them with the helicopter than it is for our patrol cars to chase them. That's when the accidents happen and sometimes people get hurt. So actually, that helicopter, it's a safer way, actually even for the speeders, and it's safer for police officers. So I think this is a great thing, and I do appreciate Senator Fisher's help. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any further lights. Is there a motion?
Moving to approve.
There's a motion in a second. Roll call.
Hug. Melton. Row. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Non-action items, items 64 through 77 do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and our vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda as well as the date the item is expected to appear on the agenda for consideration.
The city council now intends to move into executive session in which we will only discuss personnel matters. Is there a motion?
Motion to move to executive session. Personal matter.
Second. There's a motion in a second. Roll call.
Hug. Melton. Row. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. [inaudible][1673.23] Motion passed, six to zero. For the set.[474.25]
You all screwed up.
Do you want to make a motion?
City Council now take a motion to come back to the session for my person from a executive session where we all discuss personal matters.
Yep, we have a. Hug. Melton. Row. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President. Hug. Melton. Row. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President. Motion passed six to zero, media is adjourned.